Good evening and welcome, everyone. This is the December 16th Watertowns Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. My name's Melissa Santucci-Rozzi. I'm the Chair of the Watertowns Zoning Board of Appeals. We have a very long agenda this evening. Several of the cases will be withdrawn. Others will be continued. I'll go over those as well as the order of the cases that we're going to discuss this evening. What I'd like to do first is take attendance of the board members by roll call. And then I'll introduce the staff members that are here with us this evening. Member Ferris?
Present.
Member Heap?
Present.
Member Donato?
Present.
And member Bragwin?
Present.
So we have five members of the board here with us this evening. Four full members. Michael Bragwin's our alternate. He will be acting as a full member this evening and voting on all the petitions. Our staff that we have here with us this evening. Gideon Schreiber, one of our senior planners. Larry Field, another one of our planners. Michael Mennar, our zoning enforcement officer. And Josh Manning, zoning assistant and clerk to the board. So all our staffs here and our board members are here. I'd like to review the agenda. We have, like I said, we have several cases. Case number three, 174 Boylston Street will not be heard this evening. That will be continued to the January agenda. Case number four, 66 Galen Street will also be continued and will not be heard this evening. Under our continued cases. Case number four, 46 Canaanian Street will be continued to January as well and not heard this evening. And then 90 School Street. We heard that petition last month. It appears they're not ready to return to the board. And that matter will be continued and will not be discussed this evening. We have two petitions that are going to be withdrawn. The first one that was going to be withdrawn this evening is 142 Forest Street. And the second one that we will withdraw is 38 Bradshaw Street. The cases that will be heard this evening will be in the following order. 17 Perry Street will be heard first. 202 Arsenal Street will be heard second. And 615 Arsenal Street will be heard third this evening. Those are the three cases that the zoning board will be discussing this evening. We also have two sets of minutes, our administrative items. Minutes from October 28th and also from November 18th. If the board has had a chance to read those, I will take a motion to approve both sets.
Madam Chair, I have not read the November meeting minutes.
Okay, we will table those to January. Is there a motion for October? There's been a motion made to approve the minutes from the October 28th meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been seconded. All those in favor for approval by roll call, member Heap?
Aye.
Member Bragwin?
Aye.
Member Donato?
Aye.
Member Ferris?
Aye.
And an aye for myself, Santucci-Rozzi. So those minutes are approved. I'd like to do the withdrawal of the cases I stated earlier at this time. 142 Forest Street, the applicant was in front of us a couple of months ago. Is there a motion to accept the applicant's petition to withdraw this application?
So moved.
There's been a motion made by member Heap. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by member Bragwin. All those in favor by roll call vote. Member Ferris?
Aye.
Member Donato?
Aye.
Member Heap?
Aye.
Member Bragwin?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. So that petition is withdrawn. Anybody that's interested in 142 Forest Street? I know we had quite a few voters at the last meeting. The second petition that will be withdrawn this evening is 38 Bradshaw Street. Is there a motion to accept the applicant's request to withdraw?
So moved.
There's been a motion made by member Heap. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by member Bragwin. All in favor by roll call vote. Member Ferris?
Aye.
Member Donato?
Aye.
Member Bragwin?
Aye.
Member Heap?
Aye.
And an aye for myself as well for Santucci-Rozzi. So that petition is withdrawn. Any folks that are here for that this evening. So moving on to the cases that we will discuss. Before we get into that, Gideon, can you do your little spiel on how people can comment and email you? And all those great things to participate?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So we have an agenda that's been posted. And on that agenda, there are numerous ways to both watch the meeting and also participate. It's televised on Watertown Cable Access TV. You can also join the meeting through the Zoom link on the agenda. There's also a phone number if you are having a hard time or would like to join the Zoom conversation by dialing 877-853-5257. And you can type in the webinar ID of 606-857-230 and then pound. If you're called in as an attendee and would like to respond or have a question, you would have to hit star nine on your phone. There's also an opportunity to send emails to my email, gschreiber, g s t h r e i b is an boy e r at watertown-ma.gov. That's also on the agenda if you need to find the link to that on the website.
Thank you very much, Gideon. Our first case is 17 Perry Street. Our clerk, David Ferris, will read the legal notice. And then the petitioner can start with their presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. 17 Perry Street, David Archakin requests a special permit finding under section 4.06 to construct a second story addition with non-conforming rear and side yard setbacks.
Is the petitioner here?
Yes, hi, I'm David.
Hi, David. You can make a presentation, sir. Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Archakin. I've been living in Watertown since I was five years old. I graduated in Watertown High. This is my wife recently got married. She thought she wanted to join. So we recently bought the house on 17 Perry Street. And it's a Cape House. The side setbacks to the left and the right are both too close, closer than they're supposed to be on the current house. So we don't want to change the current setbacks on the first floor. But the second floor, the setbacks is about a foot in on the edges. So basically, we just want to take down the second floor. We just want the second floor to match the first floor's setbacks. We're also doing a small addition in the rear, but that doesn't affect any of the setbacks. I know when you guys read it off, you said also the rear setback. But I think that was a typo initially. I'm not, my rear setback is 30, almost 35 feet, which isn't affected. But yeah, right now, the house is very old. And I don't think it's been touched for about 60 years and any renovations. So there's no closet space on the second floor. It's pretty tough for living. We're just, we just want to make it more functional for us to move in and hopefully start a family. But yeah, so basically, we're just asking for permission to build the second floor and go up a little bit and at the same floor print as the first floor. And yes, that is all.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. We have your plans and your materials here. And just looking at your application, sir, it does look like you meet the rear setback. That bump out in the back is within the non-conforming side setback on that side, but maintaining that as well. So it looks like the additions only impact the side setbacks. And again, noting that we're in the two-family zoning district here. So I'm going to open it up to the board members. Do you have any questions, member Heap, or comments?
I don't have any questions or comments at this time. Thank you.
Member Bragwin, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions or comments at this time.
Okay, member Donato?
Just one question, thanks, Madam Chair. Will the siding match with the addition? Is that your plan to have everything?
No. The addition, what do you mean? Like the addition in the back?
Right, with the new addition that you're proposing to build, will you have siding that matches?
Siding?
On the property?
Oh, yeah.
All the siding on the new addition?
All the siding will be done, all the siding is going to be new. It's very old. So it'll all be brand new for the entire house. Yes.
Great, thank you.
Member Ferris, questions or comments?
Madam Chair, thanks, just a couple. Actually, that was one of my questions as well, that member Donato asked. So right now, it's wood shingles. So you're going to be removing the wood shingles and doing something uniform?
Vinyl?
New vinyl. What about the, so the windows are the, is the plan to have the existing first floor windows remain? And will the new second floor windows match them?
So the first floor windows will remain. And we're hoping to do the second floor windows, as you can see in the architectural drawing. I mean, we lined them up with the first floor windows. So they're symmetrical. But yeah, it's just the, on the left side, there's a, there's like a bigger window on the top floor. We're just doing two windows side by side.
Right. So out of curiosity, do you know how long the first floor existing windows have been there for?
I'm guessing since the house was built. There aren't any renovations done in that house.
Yeah, so the reason I'm asking is just similar to the uniformity of the siding. I'm just wondering about the uniformity of the windows. And if the new windows on the second floor will be a match to the first floor. One thing I do notice is that, at least just the way it's drawn, the second floor windows are just slightly taller than the first floor windows, which is a little bit atypical. You know, if anything, the first floor windows would be a little bit taller more traditionally. So that's why I'm kind of focused on the windows and whether you're intending to keep them, whether the new windows upstairs, which need to be egress windows when, you know, one per bedroom. I'm wondering if it's, from what we, from what we see, the second floor windows are just a little bit larger and taller is what I mean. So that's a little bit unusual.
Yeah, so we are redoing the first floor windows also. We're not leaving the current windows. We were just thinking the same style. So yeah, so I'm guessing that the new up-to-date windows would be the same height as the second floor. I'm guessing it's, so I mean, if that is an issue though, that's not a problem. We are redoing all the windows. I was just going to keep the same style, the longer window on the first floor. But if the height is an issue, I mean, that's no problem. I'm guessing the new windows would be the same height. We're going to use all one brand of window.
Yeah, good. So I think it would be, I think it would be good for you to kind of strive to make the heights uniform on first and second floor in terms of the appearance of it being kind of built at one time. You're doing the new siding to make it look that way as well. It's good that you're replacing all the windows that then you'll know and will know that the profiles of all the windows will be the same. So again, it won't look like something different was added up above something existing down below. So that really concludes my questions, I guess, with the responses that you're going to replace all the windows and you're going to strive to make them a similar height. The thing that you'll have to be careful for with your architect and with your builder and with the building department is that you're achieving egress windows on the, in any space that the code requires, such as bedrooms, et cetera. So that may dictate the height of the windows, the size of the windows, which may impact the height of the windows on the first floor.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. I had some similar questions that have already been answered. I had one actual question for the staff. And just confirming that we don't get into the floor area ratio because it's a single family. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, that's correct. Single families are not subject to FAR.
Okay, okay, great. I have no further questions. I'd just like to make a comment that, you know, hearing that somebody that grew up here in Watertown is purchasing a single-family house and rehabilitating it to live in it with their family is great to hear. We don't hear that often. We hear a lot about people buying things and maxing them out and flipping them and doing all kinds of things. So I congratulate you both. And it's really, really nice to hear that a young family that's from this area is going to be living in this house. So not that it's relative to the relief, but I thought I'd add that in there because it makes me happy. I have no further questions. So I will open it up to the public. Let me see, we have 20 attendees. We have one hand risen. We have Hannah Nardi. Gideon, if you want to?
I think that might be a mistake, but I just allowed her to talk if she...
Okay, Hannah Nardi, are you trying to make public comment on this application?
No, I'm not.
Okay, thank you. Just looking here, it doesn't look like anyone else. If you could stay muted, Hannah, that would be great. Thank you. Just looking here, it doesn't look like we have anybody else that wants to, that's on the Zoom. Did you receive anything via email, Gideon?
No, I have no emails in regard to this or any other of the projects tonight. And there's nothing in our question and answer section down below either.
Okay, all right, great. So moving on, closing the public hearing portion. Again, this is 17 Perry Street in the two-family district. David is here this evening seeking to alter the non-conforming structure by putting on the second floor and the small mudroom in the back that will hold the pre-existing non-conforming side setbacks. The staff recommended conditional approval. And the planning board opted to not submit a report on this petition. And just looking at the conditions here that the staff has included, looks like we have our standard boilerplate conditions. And I think adding in condition number seven relative to the exterior materials that you had spoke about, David, all matching. And also that the windows are also uniform in style and size so that we get a nice new appearance on the structure.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In terms of the window uniformity, I'm really just speaking about the front and side elevations, not necessarily the rear elevation.
Okay, okay, we can note that as well. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, so with that, are there any motions on this petition?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve 17 Perry Street for modifications in an un-conforming setting.
There's been a motion made for approval for the alterations to the non-conforming structure. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded. All those in favor by roll call vote. Member Heap?
Aye.
Member Bragwin?
Aye.
Member Donato? Aye. And member Ferris? Member Ferris?
I think he's frozen.
Oh.
Aye.
That was an aye. And an aye for myself. I thank you, David. You paused a little bit. Okay, so that petition is approved.
Madam Chair, oh, sorry. Once that's done, I just wanted to talk this through with David because I think his connection's bad. And I wanted to suggest to use a cellphone for voice.
Okay.
My connection?
You know?
No, no, David, David, the applicant, you can leave if you want, unless you want to stay on.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome, sir. Good luck. Congratulations.
Sorry, Madam Chair. I just wanted to mention that if, I'm not sure if other people are having connection issues or hearing David being broken up, but he can use the up arrow and switch to voice over cellphone if the service connection continues to be spotty.
Okay, he was a little cut up when he was speaking, yeah.
Your voice is slightly cut up once in a while as well, but it's not as bad as his.
Okay.
David, do you want to try to switch over to voice or?
Yes, you know, I actually have my work computer running. I can actually just switch over there maybe more quickly even if we don't mind just a couple moments intermission.
Yeah, take your time, David. So David's gonna switch his setup. We're gonna have 202 Arsenal is going to be up next. So if those folks are here, Gideon, why don't you promote them all up to panelists? So they're ready to go.
The team that would like to talk, can you please raise your hand now so that I can pick out the people who may be presenting?
Okay, this is just the applicant, not the people who want to comment on the project.
Yeah.
That's a lot of hands.
It's a big team. And can you please make sure to rename yourself with the right name for the current?
Yeah, the 85, yeah, John, thank you, John. I'm like, why is 85 Walmart Project a panelist?
That was our first, that was our first meeting. And I guess it remembered the whole name.
Yep. Okay, so Kristen's on and Ed and a few other folks here. Perfect.
Ed Nardi has his hand raised, but I don't see him.
Ed Nardi is already a panelist.
Gideon, could you just make sure to promote Billy York as well, please?
I don't see, oh, there he is, sorry.
Yeah, Billy York and also Craig Finn, if he's on the list. Craig won't be presenting, but we just want to have him available for any technical questions.
Yep, we see Craig, we'll promote him too.
Great, that should do it, thank you.
Okay, and then it looks like David's back in the attendee pool. Gideon, if you want to pull him up.
Oh, yeah.
And then you guys can kick it off.
I don't see Craig in there.
Craig was there.
He's already on, I already promoted him.
Yeah, I'm here, Gideon.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, so as soon as David, did you pull David back up? Or David's gone again?
I think I'm here, yeah.
Okay, yep, there you are. Oh, there you are, okay.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Tiles, no, that's okay. That's okay. Whenever you're situated, David, you can read the notice. Take your time and then the applicant can get started.
Madam Chair, this is for 202 Arsenal?
Yes.
Great, thank you. 202 Arsenal Street, Crescent WS Venture LLC requests a special permit site plan review. Convert previously approved retail commercial building to 87,332 square feet lab and research and development facility with 1,240 square feet ground for retail space. Section 5.01.5E.
Thank you. Okay, whoever is doing the presentation can get started.
Okay, thank you. John, you want to pull up the first slide? Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and zoning board members. My name is Ed Nardi and I will be introducing the 202 Arsenal Street project this evening on behalf of the ownership, Crescent Group and WS Development, where the owners of the site. Before we begin the presentation, I'd just like to thank the planning director and staff for assisting us getting to this point this evening. We appreciate how challenging it can be to coordinate all the town departments for a project like this. And of course, during the pandemic, it's, all those efforts are just simply amplified in terms of getting things done and coordinated and reviewed. So thank you to planning director McGoon, Gideon Schreiber, and Laura Weiner for all their efforts working with us over the past year and a half approximately. After my introduction this evening, John Sullivan of SGA will walk us through the details of the project. And he'll be assisted with our landscaping consultant and our traffic engineer. After our presentation, we have a full complement of our team here to answer any questions that the board members may have or members of the public. And with that, we'll begin in the presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Next slide, John, thank you. I just wanted to briefly review the general overview of the project and our requests this evening. As noted, a special permit was granted in 2014 for our site as a mixed-use development consisting of approximately 297 units and 65 square feet of retail, known as the Gables Residential today, having been built in 2016, along with a 34,000, approximately a 34,000 square foot retail building, which is the subject of tonight's discussion. All these parcels are located in the I. And as noted in the introduction, we're seeking approximately to change the retail building of approximately 34,000 square feet to a new lab building with retail, again, 88,500 square feet with 142 parking spaces. An opportunity has presented itself where we are shrinking the footprint of the retail building to be more conducive with a lab floor plate. So it has allowed the opportunity for us to improve all the edges of the property along the public way on Arsenal Street as well as down the access drive to the rear of the property as well as along the eastern edge. And of note, on a fiscal side, you know, lab properties are expensive to build. I have a high tax rate. And thus, a quick comparison, again, these are approximate dollars, but the lab building would generate approximately $1 million more on an annual basis based on our discussion with the tax assessor. And just quickly to note some of the process we've been through. We started in June this past summer with David Gamble on a design review, went through a developers' conference with all the town departments and planning and DPW. I had two neighborhood meetings and we've, and had two planning board hearings to arrive here this evening. I also wanted to just touch on the history of the site quickly. Back in 2014, when the special permit was granted for this particular parcel as a retail site, we did have a discussion that it could be a good potential grocer site at that point in time. WS Development, our partner in the site, is the largest retail developer in the Northeast. And they embarked on a leasing campaign for the retail in 2015 and continued that effort for approximately four and a half years until the middle of 2019. They spoke to over 200 retailers during that time, including all grocery-related entities. Obviously, the site here is an old industrial site, approximately one full floor below Arsenal Street for the most part, did present some unique challenges, having the parking to the rear and below Arsenal Street. On-street parking, as we know, is very limited. And of course, with the advent of Arsenal Yards development and approval in 2017, it drove all kind of, you know, quality retail interest to that portion of Arsenal Street, which is the norm. Retail likes to cluster. And then, of course, in 2018, when Roach Brothers was announced that they would be coming to Arsenal Yards, it, for all intents and purposes, foreclosed that potential use at this location. In the third quarter of twenty nineteen, we reengaged with the town and planning to discuss alternate uses, lab, R and D, multifamily. Ultimately, we decided to go the route of lab R and D, given not only the emerging cluster on the kind of the east end of Watertown that was meeting with success. We also had developed the property of sixty five Bro Street and. Certainly, four out of the five tenants. That we were seeing up at that prop at that property back in twenty seventeen. Were lab tenants primarily from Cambridge. Looking for other, you know, space outside of Kendall Square, which we know is kind of the epicenter of the lab market. We also feel that this size project is 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 will fit nicely within kind of the Watertown ecosystem. It's not a large project. It's not a it's not a small project. It's kind of a midsize project and certainly it would cater to a number of midsize lab. Entities. And just quickly, want to just touch upon the history of the site very briefly. We purchased the GE site in twenty eighteen. This this is the configuration back in twenty eighteen in terms of the abutting parcels, the parolee site, which is the parolee. You know, brickyard, if you will. And then a small local player, Tim Shannon, had bought the. Part of the former rail bed, I think, back in two thousand five, two thousand six. So when we bought the GE site, we realized it was it did enjoy a. Twelve hundred foot easement through the parolee site for trucking. And of course, it had a Birch Street access in the rear for vehicular access. And we 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 realized that while there was access, it was far from perfect and wasn't appropriate for, you know, quality development. So. The first step we did was meet with Tim Shannon and and we agreed on purchasing his site to allow us to have some access to Arsenal Street. But as you can see, the the panhandle that parolee kind of. Was in front of the primary frontage of our site, we realized that we had to do something with parolee in order to a. Get a better. Regular site for future development as well as hopefully provide. By working through that easement on his site. So it took about two and a half years of negotiation with with the with the parolees, obviously. Good longstanding members of the community and and business interests, but eventually I think we all we all shared in the end that the desire to. Create quality lots that that could open up for quality development. So in the end, John, if you could go to the next slide. You'll see that by performing a land swap where we were able to gain some frontage in front of our lot. We removed our easement from the parolee lot. We swapped some land with them. So you can see by the the regular lots before you that that accomplished that primary goal. And we also created an access easement as a private drive today that. Hope for site at two oh two, as well as the Gable site. And it also created a parking easement in our favor that is part of the proposal you'll see before you tonight. And I think there, John, I think at this juncture, you'll start to walk through the details of the project. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Ed. My name is John Sullivan. I'm a partner and architect at SGA. Very pleased to be here to present to the board, you know, a concept that we're very. You know, excited to to share. You know, it's it's great to start on this slide, particularly in in the context of the of the history that Ed just walked through. Because now that, you know, a lot of that. You know, vision for this part of the city has been fulfilled. You know, with with the Gables develop residential development, the Elon residential development, the plans for eighty five Walnut Street and all of the. You know, great work as it ties into open space and connectivity, you know, tying the, you know, tying those properties together. And we feel like our site represents, you know, somewhat of a missing tooth. Which unlocks a lot of opportunity to kind of, you know, take this site and, you know, facilitate a lot of this pedestrian, you know, connectivity and really contribute to the. You know, to the fabric of Arsenal Street in this part of Watertown. So you can see our site here in the middle, you know, represented in blue. You know, right in between the Gables resident residential development and. You know, the the Elon residential development. And and again, this is, you know, something that we're excited to noted to to really weave this. You know, weave these two sites together and to, you know, create a consistency along Arsenal Street and again to to really connect. You know, a series of open spaces that we feel like really can contribute to the, you know, to positive pedestrian experience and in in this part of Watertown. You know, with that in mind, and Ed, you know, mentioned this, but this is, you know, an amendment, an amendment to an existing master, I mean, to an existing. Special permit, our site, which is shown in in this portion of the slide outlined in blue. Is tied into the larger site that includes the the Gables Residential project. So you know what you can see in terms of open space and and. You know, you know, and access is all, you know, tied together under one concept. We are pointing out, you know, the our building footprint in in this area here, which as Ed had mentioned, is for an eighty eight thousand square foot. You know, research and development building, the footprint's about twenty seven thousand square feet, which works really, you know, well for the use and sits well on the site. And it is smaller than the than the originally proposed. Retail footprint, and that's unlocked some opportunity to. You know, really, you know, create some nice edges to this site and and give the building a little bit more of a comfortable sighting. So just highlighting some things that have informed our thought process and just tying this back into the overall, you know, previously permitted project. We do like to also, you know, identify that, you know, the use for this site is, you know, is really positive from our point of view. You know, along this part of the Arsenal Street corridor, you know, this type of research and development use, you know, is really supported, you know, is is really in line with. The town strategic framework and comprehensive plan and and really has, you know, great potential to contribute to the to the life science and science and technology ecosystem that's really starting to. You know, emerge in Watertown. So we feel, you know, we feel really excited to be, you know, part of that, you know, part of that transformation. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Kirsten Braun from Ron Mueller and Associates to walk us through our transportation concept.
Thanks, John. Again, Kirsten Braun, Traffic Engineer with Ron Mueller Associates. To start, I would like to highlight some of the improvements that have already been constructed on Arsenal Street as part of the previously approved development plan. The access drive to the site was constructed in twenty sixteen and created a new signalized intersection with Arsenal Street. This new driveway connected Arsenal Arsenal Street to the Elon Union Market and provided emergency and pedestrian access to the Gables as well as a pedestrian connection to the Birch Road neighborhood. Arsenal Street was reconstructed between Louise Street and and Irving Street to provide additional travel lanes to accommodate these proposed developments through the corridor. As part of that, the signal equipment was upgraded at the intersection with Irving Street and Beachwood Avenue to provide a coordinated signal system throughout the corridor. A multimodal pathway was constructed along the north side of Arsenal Street and Beacon Park's access to Arsenal Street was closed at the neighborhood's request. As part of these improvements, Crescent did provide a monetary contribution of about one point three million. We did perform a full traffic study for the proposed development. The aerial shown here really highlights the study area we looked at. Hatched in yellow is the site and the black S's denote our study area intersections. Working west to east, those intersections included Irving Street or Arsenal Street. Arsenal Street at the site drive and Arsenal Street at Beachwood Avenue. So as part of the study, we did estimate the number of trips to be generated by the site. These trip generation estimates are based on nationally accepted data collected at similar land uses. We did, however, make some conservative assumptions when developing these estimates. First, although the land use will be a research and development facility, we did generate trips based on an office land use. This is because offices typically generate more trips than research and development facilities. So we really wanted to provide a conservative assessment. It was also assumed that a coffee shop would be the ground floor retail use. This sort of essentially provides a worst case scenario, if you will, as coffee shops are one of the highest trip generating land uses. We also assume that most of these coffee shop patrons will be from the adjacent neighborhoods or businesses and not actually new traffic to the site. However, we didn't take an additional credit to reflect this. And lastly, will the developer will be implementing a number of TDM measures on site as required by the town of Watertown. Which ultimately aim to reduce the development's dependence on vehicular travel. We also didn't take a trip generation credit to reflect this. And as a result of these conservative conservative assumptions, we can expect one hundred and twenty one new trips during the weekday AM peak hour. And one hundred and four new trips can be expected during the weekday PM peak hour. So as mentioned before, retail use was previously approved for this site. So we really wanted to understand. How this would affect the trips that that were previously approved and what would be associated with the current build out. So we did perform a comparative analysis. The table here shows that ultimately we can expect about a reduction of about twelve hundred and seventy trips on a weekday daily basis. There will be a minor increase of trips in the morning peak hour of about forty trips and a net decrease of about one hundred and fifteen trips during the weekday PM peak hour. Ultimately, though, the proposed development will result in much less traffic than the previously approved retail use. Additionally, the aforementioned improvements along Arsenal Street were constructed based on this higher trip generating land use. And therefore, given this change in land use, we can, we can expect that all study area intersections will operate at acceptable level levels. And so, aside from the improvements already constructed along Arsenal Street, the applicant is proposing a number of additional improvements as part of this development. First, it should be noted that the applicant is an original member of the Watertown TMA. And as part of the Watertown TMA, the applicant has agreed to provide an onsite transportation coordinator and to create a traffic monitoring and reporting plan. Shadow parking will also be implemented on site to reduce the total number of parking spaces until if and when they they are needed. And a number of charging stations will be installed on site. Also, based on our analysis, we did find that the length of the westbound right turn lane into the site can be reduced and ultimately will be able to provide. Four additional on-street parking spaces on Arsenal Street. Additionally, based on this analysis and the change in land use, we're actually able to reduce the number of exiting lanes from the site from two to one. This allows us to provide enhanced pedestrian and bicycle connections to the site, including bike lanes and sidewalk along the east side of the access drive. And lastly, the developer is working with the town to install a blue bike station along Arsenal Street to increase cycling opportunities through the study area. In addition to this blue bike station, on-street bike bike parking is also proposed. So this next slide here just really shows those improvements to the access drive that we're making. As you can see, under the existing conditions, there's really no bike accommodations, and we're really lacking a sidewalk for pedestrians along the east side of the access drive. So under our proposed conditions, we're going to reduce the number of exiting lanes from two as shown in existing conditions to one. And while with this extra width in the roadway, we'll be able to provide bike lanes along either side of the drive. And we'll be able to install sidewalk also along the east side of the access drive. And these improvements are really crucial to to improve pedestrian and bicycle connectivity to the site and the surrounding neighborhoods. And with that, I'll turn it back over to John. Thank you.
Thanks, Kirsten. So I'm going to introduce, you know, the site in a little bit more detail. And, you know, we figured we'd we'd start off with, you know, with just some photographs to highlight the, you know, the very specific context that we're responding to. So again, we refer to this site as the as the missing tooth that's, you know, right now, you know, kind of a kind of a blank parcel between the two residential developments. And, you know, and again, really represents an opportunity to to weave these two sites together. You know, what you see on site today in the upper left, you know, corner just highlights. You can see the Elon development in in the background. You see the the mixed or the the community path. In in the foreground along Arsenal Street and then a fence condition, which, you know, which kind of, you know, holds that Arsenal Street edge of our site currently. The image to the to the right highlights the intersection that Kirsten was just describing to our site drive in Arsenal Street. You know, what you see is, you know, guardrail, there's, you know, there's really no, you know, pedestrian experience bringing people into the site and you see. You know, the the large scale garage of the of the Gables Development in, you know, towards towards the back of this image. The lower left, you know, captures the the garage. We we highlight that because, you know, our our placement of our building has impact on, you know, some of that visual access. But really, the the lower left image, you know, is helpful to highlight the the significant topography change that exists on the site. Which represents about a twelve to fourteen foot, you know, difference from Arsenal Street to the rear of the sites. I think it's important to, you know, to highlight that because it's informed. You know, some of our design response and has presented us with some opportunity to, you know, to mass some of our parking strategies. Two areas of the site in particular that we wanted to focus on, you know, was the, you know, is the the condition at the the site entry drive. The image on the left, you know, highlights, you know, the guardrail that exists today, the fence condition, the three lanes that will be reducing as as Kirsten just just ran us through. So that's, you know, just kind of our starting point for how this part of the site works today. And we see that as as definitely an opportunity for for improvement to facilitate the connectivity that we're trying to achieve. And then the image on the right reflects what's happening to the eastern part of the site along the Gables property. This is on their property. And it represents a, you know, plaza that's associated with a portion of the building that steps down from from Arsenal Street. There's, you know, somewhat of a great gray change to bring you from the sidewalk into that plaza. With with a ramp that borders our site. So we felt like that was important to to highlight just because, you know, it it, you know, gave us some cues as to how we wanted to respond on that edge of the site. With that, I will, I will introduce, you know, the the site concept, and then I'm going to pass it over to to our landscape architect to walk through some of the detail. But what you see here is, you know, the the position of our our building is is set fifteen feet off of the eastern. Property line towards towards the Gable site. And it's tight to, you know, the edge at Arsenal Street, and we feel like that that really gives it a strong street presence and has given us a a great opportunity to. You know, really craft the public realm along Arsenal Street and after these different moments of, you know, pedestrian experience opportunities. You can see the 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 street that Kirsten was referencing referencing earlier to the left, or I'm sorry, to to the to the west of our. Of our building, you know, allows vehicles into the site. You know, we've added space for, you know, for bikes and for pedestrians. So that that really does, you know, give good safe access to the rear of the site and that and that's where that connectivity opportunity exists to. You know, tie into the pedestrian path that connects, you know, the the multiple properties. You know, that we're that we're describing here. So so with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass it over to, well, actually, one more point, I think it's helpful to make before we we get into the detail is that. You know, because of the site's topography, and you'll you'll see this in some later imagery. The building itself is flush with Arsenal Street. And there's some parking that is located beneath the building. It's somewhat of a podium style. So as your as your, you know, if you can see my cursor as you're following. You know, entry into the site down this access drive, when you get to the lower portion where this parking is, you're actually able to kind of access underneath the building and I. That's not always easy to see in this plan view, but I think it's important to to understand as we're kind of describing the, you know, the different site moments because again, there's there is a significant. You know, topographical differences, you know, from from Arsenal Street to the rear of the site. So so with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass it over to Eric Benardic from VHB, who will walk us through the landscape design.
Hey, John. Again, Eric Benardic, I'm a landscape architect with VHB. And just to explain the site plan on how it addresses all four edges of the site really nicely in a very thoughtful manner with a few things. Few elements or key elements in mind, one being sustainability. We're really trying to. Create a very low maintenance type of landscape and site plan. Focusing on water efficiency, maybe using drip irrigation, no lawn areas whatsoever on the site plan. Native plants and also dark sky compliant lighting. Really minimizing any type of. Overage of light exceeding into or beyond the property lines as well. Secondly, pedestrian mobility connection and interaction. Improving how pedestrians can move across the front of the site along Arsenal Street. And as John and Kirsten had mentioned, access down the access driveway align pedestrians to. Access the site and also into the north side of the site or to the top of this page, enhancing the connectivity back to the Gables Rain Garden Park. enhancing the connectivity back to the Gables Rain Garden Park, which is a porous pathway noticed here in dark gray at the top of the plan. And also creating some pedestrian plaza for pedestrians to be able to access from the streetscape and be able to use it more effectively. Thirdly, integration of context. And what I mean by that is just making this really fit into the Arsenal Street theme. So the Elon development and enhancing the streetscape theme and really making it fit in very nicely and complimentary. And fourth aesthetically, just a really aesthetically pleasing site, not only to look at but utilizing very attractive materials that complement the architecture and just create a very inviting site all four four edges of the site. And what I would like to do now is just move around the site from the streetscape and talk a little bit more detail, focusing on some of the things that came out of our planning board discussions. One being enhancing the street trees and planters along the front of the building, which you see here in the three street trees. Enlarging the planters. We did start out with smaller planters. They've been enlarged now to about six by fourteen. And to assure those to remain healthy, we're also extending the planting soil medium beneath with more of like a structural soil type of application. And then also introducing the blue bikes, which Kirsten has mentioned, you see the the long gray rectangular shape along the brick band, introducing bike racks over on the far right corner of the building, benches along the left side and also an attractive planter that would also incorporate some nice signage. And again, from the streetscape down to the parking is around a twelve-foot draw, so to get an attractive barrier there as well, which would also complement the existing wall that's on site that John had previously mentioned. We'd also relocate some of the pedestrian signal, which is currently located closer towards Arsenal Street and impacts kind of the pedestrian movement on the ADA ramps. So we're shifting that a little bit further into the site. And then as we progress around to the west side of the site, one of the things that came out of the clean board as well is to introduce the shadow parking, again, as Kirsten mentioned, which is some really nice pedestrian spaces within the parking area for employees to be able to use, which would host some nice raised planters, as you see in the pictures to the right, potentially some type of nice decorative paving, kind of stepping stones, but something that's flexible. Snow could also be stored there and planters could be shifted around benches, tables and so forth. So very nice flexible space, complemented with some nice dark sky lighting as well. We shift around to the north side of the site. We see a really nice space that we worked closely with the with the with Watertown to be able to enhance the access road to a really nice pedestrian space that's multifunctional, services all user groups with some workout stations, kids zones, play areas, interpretive signage, decorative paving on the asphalt paving that would also complement that pedestrian access path, which is the great strip that's porous and extends back again to that rate that Gables Rain Garden Park and to the neighborhoods to the north as well, which also make a nice connectivity over to the rain garden to the west side or east side of the site. And as we continue to the next slide, you do see, I think we skipped over a slide maybe? There's a slide before this one. Okay. And so as you see on the the east side of the site, you see the bio retention area, which is a nice decorative stone spill capturing stormwater. That's part of the overall stormwater strategy. That particular stormwater at the rain garden will handle the water from the plaza to the bottom right or the southeast corner of the of the building. So there is a a drop of about twelve feet from the plaza down to the rain garden. So it'll be really interesting how we handle stormwater there with the drain and then actually exiting the stormwater right into the the drainage well. And that'll be a really nice attractive view looking down that corridor as well. Stormwater will also be handled from the roof drainage will be handled in a subsurface stormwater system under the parking area that you notice on the east side of the blue area. And also to mention, based upon the planning board approval process, the client will be making a monetary contribution of thirty thousand dollars for off-site stormwater mitigation in result of being able to use one of the catch basins to the north side of the site within the access road close to where it's access drive. And that concludes the site plan portion. I'll hand it back on over to John. There's the bio retention. So this gives you just a little bit quick snapshot of what the bio retention area would look like and also some complimentary materials, what the plaza will have. With some nice raised planters and some nice benches as well. So it'll really complement not only the building architecture and the users within the building, but also creating some nice, nice space that complements the adjacent plaza at the Gables and invites people into this into this space as well.
Thank you, Eric. And we, sorry that we switched you around on that slide there.
No problem.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna walk you through the the building design. And, you know, we've, we've, we've set the table in terms of the context and how, you know, how the the building sits on the site. And I think, you know, now we'd like to, you know, share our our concepts for, you know, how the building, you know, functions and also starts to express itself, you know, in this in this moment. So, you know, what what you see here is is a is a section through the site with Arsenal Street on your right and and the north side of the site to your left. And this really demonstrates that that change in topography and how we're putting that to you. So you see that the, you know, the first level of the building, you know, called level level one in this on this building section is aligned with Arsenal Street. And there's three levels of R and D use, including that level that that face Arsenal Street and, you know, kind of give it, give it a forty-five foot, you know, edge along that side, which is, you know, approximately consistent with with the Gables development. You can see that there's some parking, which is the at-grade condition, but below level one is that grade with the with the rear of the site. So it's tucked under the building. And then there's one level of subgrade parking proposed as well. So I think you'll see when we go through the imagery that, you know, it actually does afford us an opportunity to tuck the the parking under the building. You know, so from a a visual standpoint, you know, it's it's concealed and it's treated nicely and and kind of, you know, hidden within what we're what we're proposing. You can also see the solar panels on top of not only the the main building roof, but also above some of the penthouse space and we'll we'll show you how that looks from a roof plan standpoint as well. You know, just kind of highlighting the the program and and, you know, how the uses relate to the different edges of the site. It's, you know, some helpful, I think, to share the the plan on the left, which represents that that ground floor plan again aligned with the Arsenal Street edge. So you see the lobby that favors the, you know, the east, you know, the southeast corner and the the plaza environment that, you know, Eric described. We feel like that can be a very active, you know, moment on the corner. We've set the building in a little bit to receive that entry and to allow for more public realm improvements along that that corner of the site. There's, you know, twelve hundred, approximately twelve hundred square feet of retail that's connected to the lobby that fronts Arsenal Street. And again, extends that, you know, that active edge, you know, to the west along the building. The building itself, the floor plates themselves are about twenty-seven thousand square feet. And you can see on the on the right-hand image for a typical upper level plan, it it really allows for flexible and efficient and attractive, you know, lab space for for prospective tenants. So we feel like that that can be very successful for what we're trying to achieve here in terms of introducing some of these, you know, research and science tenants on into this, you know, into the Watertown cluster. So that gives you a sense of, you know, how the building, how the building functions. We can, we can walk through the the parking as well. As I had mentioned, the the plan on the left reflects that, you know, at-grade parking condition, but, you know, again, you know, focusing on that alignment with with a grade at the rear of the site. You know, cars can, you know, enter into the site and can, you know, traverse, I'm sorry, and can come, you know, underneath the building to to park for drop-off as well as for, you know, bicycle access into a into, you know, a bicycle run that also has some shower amenities and some other, you know, bicycle support uses. And and then there's a ramp to get you down to the lower level of subgrade parking. So the from a flow standpoint, you know, cars can enter in and enter back out and and then turn back up the the shared dive. The, you know, the the roof, it is, you know, we're we're sharing this image to kind of highlight the organization of the of the mechanical penthouse and screening area. But but also to demonstrate the, you know, the impacts of the solar array, you know, we're excited to, you know, to meet the requirements of the ordinance. It's one of our sustainable strategies. We'll, you know, be achieving lead silver as part of this project. And and, you know, kind of getting there in various ways, but, you know, our solar plan is is something that we're, you know, we feel very positive about. I think it's helpful to note that, you know, there's, you know, we're managing this through the building with mechanical mechanical equipment and screening, but we've organized the panels in such a way that it's it's positioned on the site and you know, to the east and and to the north where it will allow for more solar access at the right time of the day for the panels that are in the low roof. So that was something that we took into consideration as we were trying to balance these different, you know, these different factors at the roof. One thing that we investigated and it came up during our public process was, you know, shadow impacts. So we looked very closely at, you know, our our buildings impacts to our neighbors. You know, really with with an eye on making sure that we're not casting any shadow onto any residential edge. And what we learned going through this process was that the, you know, the shadows themselves were, you know, mostly kept to our own site in the rare case where at certain times of the year, I mean, this this is the summer where the shops are very, you know, compact and maintained on our site in the in the in the winter months when they extend a little bit, a little bit more sun's lower in the sky. You know, when they, when they do interact with adjacent properties, it's always on structured parking. So it's it's really avoiding any residential, you know, any residential edges. So that was something I've talked about in the community process. We're able to kind of, you know, share with, as if we're having impacts in that way. And another item that, you know, came up that we wanted to, again, you know, investigate and and share our impacts on was related to the building lighting and the site lighting. So all the fixtures that are proposed here will be, it will be shielded, will be, you know, night side compliant. And the particularly the the fixtures towards the rear of the site along our pedestrian access path are bollards and are very low, you know, they're they're at bollard height and are and are all pointed down. So, you know, we feel like there's, there's no light pollution. It will be lit. It will be safe. You know, but it's really a thoughtful to adjacent residents. For the building itself, the strategy that we would employ would be all the lighting would be on sensors. So, you know, in the evening hours and people are not in the building, you know, those lights would go off if someone's in the building for a reason. And then they leave a space that'd be on a timer and those lights would go off. So again, very, you know, we just wanted to share this because it's something that, you know, we've we've thought about in terms of be respectful to the to the neighbors. So the the building, you know, the the building inspiration itself, where, you know, we're cognizant of of where we are in Watertown, where, you know, mindful of Watertown's, you know, rich industrial history. And, you know, we wanted to share these images that, you know, kind of gave us some inspiration in terms of where we are. You know, we see some of the new development in Watertown, but really looking at the Arsenal Charles for some, you know, for some inspiration and and acknowledgement of of the, you know, the history. I think you see things on this, you know, in some of the older buildings that represent, you know, vertical rhythms and proportions that, you know, we took some cues from them. But we did it in a way where we felt like it was important to, you know, express this building as, you know, a progressive research building. You know, being inspired by the past, but trying to reflect that in more of a modern aesthetic and something that we felt like could, you know, through color, through richness of material and through and through proportion could pay homage to the past, but really, you know, express, you know, express this as a as a place of research, which, you know, we think is a is a great strategy. And and with that, you know, we also felt that was very important, you know, separate ourselves a little bit from our neighbors. Those are two distinctly residential buildings that, you know, read like residential buildings and because our program is focused on research and, you know, technology, we feel like that this, you know, would be an opportunity to create a different expression, a different expression, a different experience. And because of the size of the building, we, you know, our goal was to create something that was more singular and aggression. And, you know, had a timeless quality, felt like it could really stand on its own between these other buildings. So what you see here is the is the view from Arsenal Street kind of facing our main entrance, the base of the building. You know, it's a very active edge that has our lobby, has a retail moment. We established a rhythm on the building of vertical elements that, you know, kind of work and in in a in a pattern where there's, you know, more intensity of these elements at certain ages and then they, you know, gradually dissipate to, you know, a lot of building to open up a little bit and present some more, you know, some more transparency. The the vertical elements themselves, we'll we'll share some detailed slides, but those are, you know, terracotta. There's, there's a good dimension there. There's an interesting profile. And we've talked about this in other presentations, but, you know, really as a team, we're committed to, you know, a quality of material and masonry that, again, speaks back to the speaks back to the, you know, to the past, but it's used in a way that we think is, you know, creates a very distinct and, you know, interesting expression, expression for the for the building. And see, so the public realm improvements, the plaza off to the side as well as, you know, the sidewalk condition, again, at the base of the building where we have our entry and our real, you know, activated moments. We've lifted that language up and created, you know, really to celebrate that entrance and create, you know, somewhat a dramatic moment there to, you know, to to, you know, emphasize that entry point and emphasize some of the the public, you know, opportunities that we're that we're taking advantage of around it. As we, as we move around the building, you know, this is on Arsenal Street facing east. You know, right where, right when you're opposite of our access drive. And this just gives you another view, you know, this is more a daytime view, seeing the, you know, the vertical elements and the vertical rhythm that we've established in the building again through terracotta, you know, masonry elements, you know, gathering intensity at certain corners and then pulling away at other corners, you know, to to emphasize, you know, moments of transparency. And, you know, again, we're, you know, we we think that, you know, the the this is quite exciting. It's a singular expression, materials that are very timeless. And something that's different and and, you know, separates from some of the surrounding buildings, but really does weave into the overall texture of Arsenal Street. So, you know, we we wanted to share these views. I think one thing to notice in this YouTube because we did share some existing photos. You know, this does a good job of concealing not only our parking, which, you know, which you cannot see in this view because of the, you know, the the grade change, but also the the structured parking associated with the Gables, you know, development. This, you know, visually blocks us from this approach on Arsenal Street, which, you know, which we feel like is positive. And then we want to take you, you know, everyone around to the to the rear of the building. You know, this is where we paid a lot of attention to, you know, pedestrian improvements and it really grafted an experience back here that is an exciting moment in in that, you know, now connected pathway between the Main Garden Park and some of the parcels to the west as as well as to to the neighborhoods beyond. So, you know, what you see here, I think, from a building standpoint represents, you know, continuation of that of those, you know, vertical elements of that texture. We feel strongly about that because it's, you know, it's, you know, technically the back of the building, but we felt like it's important to express that quality on all sides of the building. You know, kind of given us different faces. And it's also, you know, here we're using, you know, thicker piers, less openings, again, to be sensitive to the neighborhood and also just provide a little bit of privacy along this edge. That translates into the ground plane through, you know, all of the the planting and and bio swell moments that Eric had shared before. You know, some of the colorful paving opportunities and expressions that are, you know, give the give the space some some life in these smaller, you know, pedestrian moments where people can pull off the path and engage in activity or or rest. So, you know, there, there's a lot happening back here. We're excited, you know, by it as as a, you know, benefit to the community. And, you know, again, the building, we feel like, you know, really represents, you know, a level of quality on this side of the site that's consistent with, you know, with our other faces and and again, kind of works towards that timeless singular expression. And then, you know, this is what we were referring to in 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 terms of level of detail. And I'll say we're, you know, our our team is is committed to, you know, this type of execution. We're showing glazed terracotta panels. You can see the profiles of the peers have, you know, you know, a lot of emphasis on depth and on the and on the profile. And at a detail level, when you're close to this building, it's going to be quite special. And then when you pull away from it, I think it's these moves that really, you know, add a level of richness, you know, that that you drive the architecture. So we felt like it was important to share this, you know, this level of detail because those those dimensions and the depths really do matter. And then, you know, and then we're, you know, just kind of walking around the elevations. And I think this is probably the the best slide where you can understand, you know, the rhythm that we're proposing for the vertical elements. You know, you can see like in the lower left-hand image, there's, you know, thicker elements to the left and they gradually become smaller and then ultimately they, you know, they they fade more towards, you know, what we consider an important corner. And that just allows some transparency to express itself. And we've strategically And we've strategically, you know, arranged that around the building, you know, to emphasize the, the moments in the building that matter. To be very thoughtful about our window to wall ratio so that we're, you know, you know, providing a building that, you know, performs very well from an energy standpoint. And again, just drawing your eyes to certain points in this building where we think it's appropriate. I will say, because it came up in the, in the planning board that. You know, there, there is this vertical emphasis because it's not a very tall building and we wanted to, you know, mitigate the length and express, you know, take some cues from the. You know, the elements that we were inspired by at the arsenal and integrate the vertical moments, but, you know, special care will be paid attention to the horizontal. Layers as well, we know where we have some of our span roll condition, we talked, you know, but that was the planning board. And we feel like that can be crafted in as that second layer of. You know, second, second layer behind those peers that, you know, kind of supports, supports that then, you know, subtly acknowledges those, those horizontal moments. So, you know, those, that's what we wanted to point out with these, you know, with these elevations, because I do think it speaks to, you know, to the rhythm that we're, that we're, you know, feeling very good about. So, so that, you know, that, that concludes our presentation and I'll turn it back over to, to Ed. And, and so the, to the team to, you know, open discussion.
Thanks, John. So we're here to certainly listen to any concerns, questions that the board members may have or the public.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Nardi and for your team. That was a very nice detailed presentation, which is, which is helpful. I think it really helps minimize the questions when you, when you present that much information. In conjunction with the materials that, that were provided to the board. What I'd like to do is open it up to the board members, see who has questions or comments. Why don't we start with member Donato?
Thanks, Madam Chair, and thank you all for the really thorough presentation and the thoughtful design. So my first question is appropriate to the impending snow for tonight. I know the majority of the spaces of the 150 spaces are below ground, but we do have those 26 spaces above ground. And I wanted to check on your plan for snow removal and make sure that the intent was to remove it offsite.
Yes, if, if certainly if, and any significant snow event, there's, you know, not a lot of storage space, you know, available. So yes, we would be removing that on site to make sure that we have the parking in, in good stead for the, for the users of the site.
That's great. Thank you. And then my next question is about the shadow parking. I know with condition 20, it allows that to be converted if needed by a letter to the town. I'm also wondering if the inverse could be the case too. So if eventually you found you needed it and you had it, and at some point you decided it was no longer needed. Is there a way through a letter to the town to potentially. Revert that back to shadow spacing?
Sure, I, I, I think that would be fine to have that kind of reciprocal, you know, arrangement. If, if we find that we do, you know, can, can recapture that back in the future. If it was go to a parking and then take it back into shadow. That, that would be, we'd be all for that in terms of trying to, again, minimize the parking on site. And provide an amenity to the building as well as the community.
Great, thanks. And then my last question was just about the. Existing chain link fence to the north. And I was just curious because the design is, is really, really great and really thoughtful. I was just wondering if there's ever a discussion with your neighbors to the north about that existing chain link fence and to try to dress it up a little bit.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. Thank you for that. We'd be happy to talk to our neighbor and, you know, certainly see if we can, to your point, dress that up a little bit and move away from the chain link. You know, fencing, so we, we'd be happy to, you know, entertain that discussion and, and see what we can do to make that more visually acceptable.
Sorry.
Great. And that's, that's all the questions I have for now, and thank you again.
Can I ask that we just remove the share screen so I can see a better, yeah, thank you. So I can see, see my, my, my people here. Member Bragwin, any questions or comments?
Yes, one, I guess a comment to start. Thank you for that presentation. It was, it was, you answered a lot of my questions with your presentation. And also a second comment, I, I like the look of the building. I think it's, it's pretty sharp looking, I'll say that. You mentioned, I like the kind of terracotta aspect to it. It, what, is that actually made out of some type of clay material? I might have missed that, but you said terracotta a few times. Is that actually what it's made out of?
It, it is, it, it is made out of clay, it's, these are all custom shaped. There's a local. Provider in the Boston area we're working with, but all these, all these shapes and all these forms will be custom fired and then glazed and then brought to the site. And obviously they're fairly sensitive, so there's a, you know, a lot of concern about the handling of those materials, you know, as they get hand laid on the site. But yes, they are all, all clay custom materials.
Okay, now that was curious because I, I think that's great to see some material, actual, you know, materials that are what they are supposed, you know, what they look at.
Yes, yeah.
That's kind of refreshing to see. And one question, and this has come up with other projects that have a large kind of glass. I like the glass as well, but I know one concern that's been raised and I don't, I don't know if anyone raised it for this project, but I just remember a similar glass facade project. Is what happens with the lights at nighttime? Is there some system where the lights are automatically turned off? So it's not a big illuminated glass building in the middle of the night or after certain hours?
Sure, John, I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a great question. And yes, we, you know, the, the plan is to provide, you know, interior lighting that would be on sensors. So they'd be controlled, you know, at different, you know, they'd be controlled in the evening. If someone needed to be in there, they'd, you know, they'd have access to those lights, but after they left the space, those lights would go off. So, you know, kind of through that type of system, we'd ensure that it would be. You know, dark and, and, you know, sensitive to the neighbors at night. So, so that, that's how we do it, we control it through sensors on the fixtures.
Okay, great. That's, that's all the questions I have right now, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Bragwin. Member Ferris?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I do have a couple of questions and comments. So first comment is really like what I think is was an excellent presentation. So really, thank you very much. You know, the, the building is, I think, really very attractive as a, as a comment as well. I guess I just want to make a, a point to all of us that the quality of the materials is not something that we. See on every project sadly in, in Watertown. So I just want to commend the whole team for what they're proposing in terms of the, just the quality of the materials and the design. I also want to point out, just in terms of my own perspective, that some members of this team, the architect in particular, is responsible for. You know, one of the buildings in, in town that I think is one of the most successful that we've seen recently, which is the links building. Also in terms of creative design and quality of materials. And I really do appreciate the, the vertical orientation, the, the, the presentation that you were giving relating it to the original arsenal building. And also just the companion building that also the same architect has been a member of the team. On the other side of the gables that has a horizontal emphasis and the fact that this is vertical, I think is, that'd be very nice for the street scheme. So I, I really do appreciate all of those things and wanted to comment on them. I do have a couple of questions about the site plan and wonder if site plan or either like the first floor plan with the site. Or the site plan, I think would be something that would be a good tool for the questions that I've got.
Let me pull that up.
Yeah, that's perfect. So the, just for, for clarity on my end, so the, the existing bike paths along Arsenal Street are there and remaining in the condition that they're in, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Just wanted, wanted to understand that and clarify that. Could we talk not extensively, but I'm just how is trash being handled, being removed from the site?
Yeah, sure, I, I can run through that a little bit. So, you know, we've, we've worked to really, you know, tuck some recycling and trash rooms into the rear of the building at that lower level where the parking is. And it, it may be helpful if I go to that plan here. It's, it's really at that, at that lower, you know, parking level where we have some utility spaces. And then, you know, trucks will have access to kind of pull up and, you know, access some of that. You know, access areas.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that the trash was, I, I wasn't seeing any indication of it out at the exterior of the building. I wanted to confirm that it was inside the building, so thank you very much. You know, could, could we maybe elaborate a bit about the. The, how the retaining wall, which wraps around from arsenal and then down the entry drive as that descends from. Basically an 11 foot grade transition to, you know, nothing. What's, what's creating the guard aspect of that wall? Is there a fence on top of that wall? Does the wall form the guard? How does that happen?
Yeah, sure. Good question. Yeah. So as you look at right where the arrow is on the, right at the bottom left corner of the building. We have two walls coming off of the building. One wall on the back or the parking lot side is the main retaining wall. That will connect into the existing wall that's out there, which is a block wall, which is shown in white. And we're going to actually extend off of that, connect to the building. That wall will technically be like a parquet wall because it will extend up above the grade at Arsenal Street. Will be a second wall in front of that wall retaining wall, which will be almost like a seat wall that will. Provide a connection to those benches that will actually be built and connected into the wall, just like you see on the bottom left. So it looked very similar to the bottom left picture. Where you have a bench built in, there'll be two walls acting or creating a plant or containment.
Okay.
And then there'll be a fence mounted on the back wall.
For safety. Okay, and the fence is what type of material?
It'll be like either, most likely like an ornamental aluminum. We haven't figured out the exact materials yet, but some type of probably a black type of ornamental aluminum. That will complement the architecture.
Great, okay, thank you. So then the white diagonal that we see for the retaining wall is, is an existing component.
That's correct.
All right. And in the foreground, I think I noticed on maybe one of the, one of the sheets in the package. So within the planter, it's a, it's a variety of planting and not just ornamental grasses.
Yeah, we will do a variety. I would like to also create some winter interest as well. At the low evergreen with ornamental grasses as well.
Great. That, that was my concern is that the grasses are really not doing all that much for us in the, in the winter times. That'd be, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah.
And then. The. Let's see, I, I, this would just be a comment that if you just maybe show us the site plan again. Great. So I know that the retail is basically in a sense, front and center in the building plan. And that's, that's fine. And I very much appreciate the corner, the presence of the corner for the building entry. I guess the one thing I do wonder about is the, the animation in a sense, or the activity of the, the plaza on the, on the east or the right hand side bordering the lobby. And that it's a little bit of a dead end situation. So I would just encourage that if there's any further ability to engage the lobby with that space to help it be used, that would be a nice attribute. You know, and then in another scenario, if the corner entry weren't so prominent in a sense, like it might not be a bad idea to have the retail on that side opening up to some. Cafe tables, that might be a coffee shop or something, but it certainly don't want to make that any type of. It's just an observation that it would be nice to, I think, if we can animate the activity on that, that little plaza there. And I, you know, I. The, the roof screening, I also really appreciate, I'm assuming that it's really quite tall, so I'm assuming that it's really going to be. Concealing most of the equipment that's happening there. I know that in lab buildings, you can be fairly tall. But, yeah, and I think that really concludes my questions and I just want to comment again on the. The quality of the presentation of the application and of the building and site design. So thank you.
Thank you, Member Ferris. Member Heap, any questions or comments?
Thank you. Just one or two, and I also want to echo all the other board members' comments to thanking the applicant for. Really a remarkably thorough presentation and set of application materials and a great site design and building design. I think the project is, is really a very good one. So I guess my only question isn't so much with this project itself, and it's not even a question, it's to comment about. The loss of the retail and the loss of the retail, particularly where that retail was approved. As part of a mixed use project where the residential component has already been constructed. So I guess this is more a question for Gideon or Mike. I just want to be, I guess, satisfied that the residential component of the mixed use project that's already been done. Isn't reliant in any way on the resident, on the retail space that we are now losing. I guess stated differently, I want to make sure that the residential component can stand on its own. And didn't require the 33,000 square feet of retail that we're, we're now not going to have as part of the project.
Sure, Madam Chair, would you like me to address that now?
Yeah, that's fine, Gideon. Thank you.
Yes, um, so this was a combined project with two development, two approvals. The residential component has a small mixed use component and satisfied the requirements for their setbacks and was required to be built first. The original commercial retail component, which is this site, could not have been built under the existing zoning. At the setback it was at unless it was a mixed use. And so it, it needed the residential, the residential did not need this.
That's helpful. Thank you, Gideon. And that's my only, that was my only. Concern and that's all I got.
Okay, great. Um, I have a couple of questions. I was looking through some of the other materials here during the presentation, which again is just, you know, A plus. Seems like John Sullivan's the man now. He, he's, he's done some wonderful. Buildings here and, and wonderful presentations, which is like my other members echoed, very, very helpful. My first question is, I'm just looking at your dimensional table. The one that was submitted with the application. My first question is in regards to the. Into the floor area ratio. So the building is about 88,000 and change. Does that include the two levels of garage wealth?
No, it includes all of the. It includes the space beneath the building that's enclosed for use, like our bike storage room and our, you know, some of our other spaces down there. But it doesn't include the, the open parking.
Okay, so the 88,000 is basically the, the lab space minus the garage and then however you get down to that garage is included?
Yeah, there's a, a handful of spaces down there that would be included, but primarily is the, the three levels of, of research space.
So, and maybe I just can't do math, but the site's about 40,000, the building's 88. How come the FAR is so low? You have it at 1.42. I did some math and it was, it was closer to two.
It, it's because, and, and Ed, Ed may be able to keep me honest here, but it's because it's, it's, it's. Part, part of the, the larger parcel together, it's the FAR is kind of based on the full parcel that includes gables and our building.
Yeah, I said, I, I think that's right, John, as, as part of a mending the special permit that was granted in 2014. The, the site was looked at as holistically as a singular site for FAR and open space in some of those dimensional requirements.
So the whole gables building and this proposed building and, and all of the gables lands and all of this land. Is considered one site?
Yes, that, that is correct.
So the, for the purpose, sorry, for the purposes of their original approval, the whole site was permitted as one site. And so sheet 2.01, C 2.01 has a summary of, of each component part and its overall review. For the entire. project for both sites.
What page was that, Gideon? The C dash 2.01?
Yeah, 2.01. There's a, a zoning summary chart that describes the east parcel, the west parcel, and then the entire mixed use project as a whole. And it, and it has, uh, required existing slash proposed, approved, and then required and proposed. So it's, it was a complex table to start with our original approval. And now it's even more complex with the amendment, but it, it describes the change and the FAR. But does it, let's see.
Um, okay. So with the retail, uh, initially we were at 1.25. And now we're at 1.42 for every, I see the, the GFA. It's, it's obviously includes the gables building now. And then, um, okay. So that's interesting. Hmm. Okay. All right. That makes sense, I guess. Um, or yes, as my question, I don't know if it makes sense, but, um, my second question is on the height. Um, so again, in your table, um, you know, required is 55 and you're showing 59.5. Um, I guess just an explanation and, um, did you request the special permit to exceed the height? I just, I maybe I missed that. I, or maybe I.
Yes, Madam, Madam Chair, this is, uh, Bill York. Nice to talk to you.
Hi, Mr. York.
I've been, I've been in the darkness here. I gotta come into the light.
I know. Get the video on.
I gotta figure out how to work these things. The, uh, essentially section 4.10, uh, which is a requested form of relief looks to, uh, that, that increased height. As a result.
By special permit.
By special permit in light, light of the numerous public amenities that, um, this brings, that you would point to.
Exactly, exactly. Um, I guess I just, did you, did you apply for that though? I, I guess it's not clear that you actually are seeking that relief.
Yes.
Oh, I see here. I see here. Okay. Okay. I get it. One, 4.10. Okay. All right. My bad. Okay. Moving on. Um, FAR, um, loading and whatnot, deliveries to the building. One of the elevations showed like two roll up doors. I'm assuming that's the rear elevation where the loading area is.
Correct.
Um, okay. And the, the trucks will come in the access drive. They'll what bang a left and then back up into this thing? Or how do they actually get in there?
They, they, they do back in. They, they, they turn and then they can turn. And if you can follow my cursor, I think they, they turn in this way. And then they, and then they back in and, and one bays here, and then one's in front of it. Um, so there's, you know, there's an opportunity to have two, you know, two bays where the trucks, you know, line up parallel to the building in the rear.
Sheet.
Okay.
Yeah, sheet C 6.03 has, shows the turning template for a WB 40.
Yep. Okay. Um, and again, I, I, do you anticipate a lot of activity there or, or, or? I find that the labs and the R and D aren't heavy on, on, on loading and, and that type of stuff. So, um, I think that that seems reasonable. Um, I would just want to make sure that anybody, you know, I think maybe thinking about, um, you have the park area and whatnot there with the loading, you know, right next to it, that, um, whatever protections can be employed as part of the landscape design to make sure that, you know, if the guy doesn't back up perfectly straight, that he's not, um, you know, impeding on somebody, you know, enjoying, enjoying the outdoor area. Um, I have a question about traffic. Um, if you could go to the slides that showed the trip gen. Um, yep, 13. Perfect. So office and R and D, that makes sense. Then we have the coffee shop. And then the pass by trips. So, um, I thought in the presentation, Kristen said that you, you did not take any credit for pass by trips, but it looks like you, you took a, a pretty credit.
So I think I, I worded that, I worded that pretty poorly. Um, we did, we did take a credit for pass by trips, but I mean, even that was 89%, but we are assuming people aren't going to be driving here mostly. So we didn't take a larger credit than what IT suggests.
Okay.
But we do assume that.
Yeah, you, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, no. So I mean, ultimately we're assuming a lot of the, the users of the R and D building and, you know, the adjacent residential uses. Um, people will just walk in on their way to work or their way home. Uh, so we didn't take a larger credit than, than the IT credit, um, which is listed in, in this and, um,
Well, it's, it's pretty big. It's 89%. I, I mean, so, okay. So we have the 920 and then you basically took the deduction and that, and then that gets us to the, to the, um, the thousand trips. Um, okay. Which again, I mean, even if it's not at that full pass by rate, um, you know, that is pretty high. Um, you know, we, we could reach that level. Um, this still is a reduction. Um, if you could go to the next slide, please, uh, 14, this still is a reduction. Um, you know, we're still looking at, um, even if we don't reach that pass by rate, a significant, uh, reduction in trips, um, from the, from the previous use. So that's definitely, um, something, something nice to see here, as well as all the materials, um, that were submitted and reviewed by, uh, Laura Weiner, um, and your participation and your points in the transportation, uh, demand management summary, um, is definitely, um, appreciated in trying to, to manage, um, traffic, uh, in the community, um, as we, as we continue to, to permit, uh, and build things. Um, I think that was all of my questions. Again, I really, you know, as I'm sitting here, I'm just saying, you know, we're just very, very fortunate, um, to have this level of quality, this level of presentation, um, all these consultants, you know, it's just very, very helpful to the board, um, and frankly, just impressive. Um, so, you know, as I was hoping for, you know, the supermarket and I had to listen to my dad say, I saw a supermarket was going there, over and over and over again. Um, this is obviously far more beneficial, uh, to the community, uh, job creation, economic development, um, and, and the tax revenues are, you know, are also welcomed. Um, so I don't have any, uh, further questions. I know we have a lot of people, um, in the audience here tonight. Um, if we want to remove the share screen, we can start to, um, open it up to the public, um, and take some public comment. Um, looks like we have 14 people in attendance. Uh, looks like Libby Shaw, uh, has her hand raised, Gideon. If you want to, um, allow her to speak, we can take her questions. And then John, you'll be next.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, Libby.
Hi. Um, I, I too am really impressed by this presentation and, and the, the presentation that happened last week on the same project. And I am following up on my questions from, from last week. Uh, I'm particularly interested in, uh, the longevity of trees that are planned for this property. And as, um, as I asked about last week, I'm particularly at the pla- planning board meeting, I'm interested in the trees along Arsenal Street because Arsenal so badly needs, um, uh, could, and could hugely benefit by having, um, healthy, long-lived shade trees. So I understand that the planters are now six by 14 feet and that structural soil is being added. Now, I just wanted to clarify, the structural soil is going to be outside of those six by 14 planters. Is that correct? Cause that, those planters should have real soil in them, not structural soil.
That's, that's correct. Uh, the, the structural soil will be approximately about 10 feet by 14 feet total. In space, so it'll extend.
Total on the outside of those six by 14.
It'll extend, yes, underneath the, the concrete sidewalk. Correct.
That's great. Thank you. Um, I also had a question. Um, there was one picture that showed a, a public plaza tree with a grading around it. The, um, the tree was very young and, um, and I was wondering what you was, what you're foreseeing for the longevity of that tree. Are you expecting that to be there in 25 years? Are you expecting it to be there in 50 years? What are you providing, um, both in terms of selection of species and in terms of the volume of soil, that you're providing for it to make sure that, that any tree that you plant there is going to have a long, healthy lifetime?
Yes. Yeah. Great question. We are going to work with the, uh, with Watertown to be able to come up with a selection of trees. And then we'll narrow it down to what we feel is the best. We do have some power lines, uh, above those tree, uh, areas. So we'll be cognizant and, uh, and sensitive to that as well. Um, we'll look at, you know, what are the, the most durable, um, and attractive, um, trees that we can put in there? Um, you know, we'll try and stay with native trees. Again, we'll work with the, um, with municipality to try and figure out what would be the right trees to, if they are native. Otherwise, we may look at Japanese tree lilacs. Um, um, there's some other forms of streetscape trees that are, are commonly used throughout Boston as well. So whatever we put in there for a tree will be extremely durable, uh, sensitive to the power lines, complement the architecture, uh, and just the overall streetscape theme.
That sounds great. Um, are you, what are you imagining as you're designing this space? What are you imagining is going to be the expected, lifetime of these trees?
Well, if you've, um, seen Japanese tree lilacs or whatever trees, um, you know, these are going to be in there for, you know, 40 years or so. I don't see why they wouldn't be. Uh, we'll, we'll look at also, as you talked about, the, uh, soil capacity or meeting the kind of standard cubic feet ratio for street trees. Um, we, we will use those standards and that's where that actual, um, dimensions have come from, uh, based on the cubic feet and the depth and so forth. Um, so, uh, we'll also be cognizant of root systems, um, over a long period of time. I think that's most important, um, to keep in mind, um, as these trees do become reaching their, you know, 20 to 40 year range, that the, the root systems, um, uh, have minimal, or if no impact whatsoever to the surrounding walkways. Uh, and that's another reason for expanding those planters as well.
That's great. Thank you very much, Mr. Bednarek. Yeah. I think it's really, it's really wonderful to see, um, beginning in Watertown, um, these big development projects where people are thinking about the long-term impact of landscaping, um, and thinking about what the landscaping is going to look like down the road. When we're in neighborhoods that we really love, one of the things we really love about them is the fact that the trees kind of seem like they've existed there forever. Um, trees don't exist forever, but it's really important to make sure that they do have long, healthy lifetimes. Um, it's, it's hugely beneficial, both environmentally and, and, uh, and just psychologically, I think, in the city. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions. Uh, John Labadini, can you recognize him, Gideon, please?
Yeah, he's already, he can unmute himself. If you, yeah.
There we go.
Okay. Hey, everybody. Um, I'll be brief, I promise. So kudos to the team and I appreciate the presentation. That was the second time I had seen it. And, uh, having grown up on Beachwood Ave, uh, this is almost to my eyes, um, um, over 40 year beautification project, with all due respect to the, the people that were there before. And, uh, to the downtown Arsenal Street and kind of see this empty lot of dirt, um, it would have been nice to have retail, but I'm glad to see, you know, the, the, the idea of research and development from a risk reward standpoint, as opposed to an empty lot to what could be empty retail. Um, this seems like a, a, a really good idea. And, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm just, uh, very, very glad to see that it's going in this direction. And, uh, uh, I support the project and I wish them success.
Thank you for your comments, John. Uh, Curtis Whitney?
Hello, everybody. Thank you very much. Um, having, uh, watched this process evolve since introducing Ed to the former GE warehouse, which was the original Star Market warehouse from many, many years ago. Um, I'm really psyched to see this cul- culmination, I hope, and, and the full support from this board of a fantastic project, a fantastic, um, revival of that area of our town. And, uh, continued success with these great, great developments and a really important board to fully endorse this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there anybody else here in the attendees that would like to make any questions? Oh, excuse me, ask any questions or make any comments? See quite a few people here. Some I think are shadowing from the teams. Um, okay.
I, um, I, the only email I got was from John Labadini and he already said, said the same thing that he sent me an email just in case he had to leave.
Okay.
Emails.
Okay.
There's nothing in the question in the answer.
Okay. Again, is, is there anyone here that's in attendance that would like to ask any questions or comments? You can raise your hand and you'll be recognized. Okay. That's a, that's a no. Um, all right. I'd like to, is there any other follow-up questions from any of the board members? Um, okay, great. Looks like we're all satisfied. Um, what I'd like to do is, um, close the public, uh, portion of the meeting. Again, we're here to, um, modify, um, our, well, slightly modify, change up from the retail, uh, the previous projects that we had looked at, which was the residential component as well as the retail component. Um, and now we have this, this wonderful lab. Um, it is a special permit and site plan review and a special permit for contiguous facade. We also have exceptions, um, to the, um, height and roof features, which is section 4.10, as well as a shadow parking, noting that it's, it's about, I believe, eight spaces, um, that are being put in shadow, um, which I think is, is reasonable. I don't think that that's overreaching. Um, we did have, um, comments from our design consultant, uh, David Gamble of Gamble Associates. He provided a letter on June 15th, uh, which I believe the applicant, uh, has addressed those comments. Um, and he provided a second review in October, um, uh, relative to the signage and notes there, there are a few areas available for signage. Considerations for blade or freestanding signs should be made soon. Um, do you have any, um, idea of where you might locate something like that, Mr. Nardi? Or is that going to be driven by the tenant? I mean, I think a blade sign for the retail would be awesome because people could see it from, from both directions. And then looking at the site, um, you've kind of maybe set it up nicely for, oh yeah, it says freestanding sign by others. Yeah, at the, at the corner there.
Yes.
Which I think are, are reasonable locations, um, that will, that will complement the site. So as always, we want to thank David, um, for his review and input in these projects, which, which makes them, makes them much better. Uh, getting back to the materials here, we had a, uh, planning, uh, staff recommendation on December 4th. We also had the planning board recommendation, which I will note for the record, uh, was unanimous, uh, 4-0. We have our, uh, draft decision here, uh, conditions, I should say, which are probably most of our, uh, boilerplate conditions, um, with obviously the, the fancier ones given, given the use in, in the building. Um, what we will do is address, uh, Member Donato's comment, uh, and condition 20 of the shadow parking to have that be, um, I think that's something, um, Member Donato raised a good point. Um, you know, if you get a tenant that needs it, you know, put it in. If you don't, take it out. I know that you guys would much rather have the landscaping, kind of really sets the tone for the site. But I think that should also be, um, if the town recognizes that that's needed, um, if there becomes use of the street parking, uh, and/or any kind of overflow into the neighborhoods, um, that that's something that I'm sure that the people in the neighborhood are, you know, keeping their eye on that. So just. So just having that condition allow for communication and the need, if there is a need to, to address the onsite parking. So if the staff could make the revisions to condition 20 to address those concerns. And then also in regards to the question about snow removal, I don't know if that is addressed in here, Gideon? Or not?
Snow removal would be, it's, I, it's addressed in the stormwater operation.
Go and M plan?
Madam Chair, I, I recommend we put that condition in the permit because otherwise it may miss, so.
Okay, all right, if you can, great comment, Mike, if you can, if you guys can add that in as well. Obviously, we get, you know, a minor storm, you know, use your, your best judgment.
Sure.
Hopefully, I don't know what we're getting tomorrow. What if we get something like they say? You know, get, get the dump trucks in there and then the back loaders to take care of that. And, you know, and again, just, just looking through these conditions here and, you know, making offsite contributions. I mean, it's just so many things in here that, that are just, you know, you're just going above and beyond. And I think it, again, it's just, it's worth pointing out for those watching at home and for the public that people are big on, on complaining and pointing out things that they don't like. But I wish that people would take time to point out the things that they do like. And again, we are just extremely fortunate here in this community to have this level of detail, design, and frankly, investment. So I don't have any other comments. Looks like my board members are all satisfied. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, for 202 to 204 Arsenal Street, I will make a motion to amend the previous 2014 decision to convert previously approved retail commercial building to lab, research, and design facility with ground floor retail space.
There's been a motion made for approval. David detailed that nicely in referencing those various sections that I had noted previously in the description. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded. All in favor by roll call vote. Member Heap?
Aye.
Member Ferris?
Aye.
Member Donato?
Aye.
Member Bragwin?
Aye.
And an aye from, from, from myself as well. Member Santucci-Razi, again, I, I really can't thank you guys enough. It's just, it's just, just awesome. I don't know what else to say it. Okay, great. So we do have, happy holidays to all you guys.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we do have one more case this evening, which is 615 Arsenal Street. I will be recusing myself from this matter. I will turn the chairing of the hearing over to member Ferris, who does a wonderful job in my absence. And, and before I leave, I'd like to just wish everyone a happy holidays. This is a, a difficult year and a difficult time. And, you know, in any way that you can enjoy yourselves, whether it's by yourself or hopefully with a few people that are in your quote bubble. I hope everyone really has an opportunity to, to celebrate and enjoy, even if it's not at the level that we'd all, we'd all like. And I really want to thank our staff and, and my fellow board members. We've done a wonderful job this year with these Zoom meetings. We've had some very large projects, some very detailed projects. And I think we've done a great job getting acclimated and pulling this off. So I want to thank all of you and our staff. We're all very, very lucky. So happy holidays, happy new year and,
holidays.
Yeah, I'll see you guys all next year. Take care, everyone. Be well.
Thank you.
Good night.
Great. So thanks. If someone would like to read the notice then for 615 Arsenal Street?
David, before we do that, I just want to confirm, is Morgan is, are you representing?
Gideon, it's Andrew Coppa Lotti. I don't see, I, I don't see, I'm using one of our shared accounts here at the office.
I'm promoting you to panelist. I was wondering, you raised your hand, so. Can you rename yourself while David does the rest of it? Sorry, David, for interrupting.
No, okay. So again, and, and Gideon and, and Mike and Josh helping along here by the step. But I, I think we just need someone initially to read the, the notice, please, for 615 Arsenal.
I can do that. 615 Arsenal Street, Home Depot USA Incorporated requests an amendment to special permits, ZB A 2016-16 ASP, to increase the available parking in the existing lot by adding a net 50 spaces along the southern edge of the property. ZB A 2020-19.
Thank you. And so if we have the applicant here, if we could begin, please.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Coppa Lotti with Boilston Properties. And here, we're here on behalf of Home Depot to amend the previous plan from November of 2016. While we are technically and legally asking you to add 50 spaces, from a practical and actual basis, what we're simply doing is no longer taking them away from the existing Home Depot lot. So I will share, I can do this, I will share my screen. And, excuse me. This is the plan that the zoning board of appeals approved in November of 2016, where at the request of Boilston Properties, we removed the parking along the very southern edge of the Home Depot parking lot. The thinking at the time was that our final building at Arsenal Yards, Building G, which is over here on the left-hand side of the screen, was going to be a residential condominium building. And we felt that the removal of this parking, kind of along the southern edge, made that experience for the future residential unit owners a much more pleasant experience. Fast forward a couple of years and what we have done is we have gone back to the planning board and turned this building, Building G, into a life science building, which we are now calling 100 Forge. That, that project was approved in, at the planning board in July of 2019. And over the past 15 months, we have been finishing the building plans and getting ready to pull a building permit. We would like to not remove these approximately 50 spaces and leave them in their current or existing condition. This is the plan that BHB did for us, which we submitted to you, that shows us leaving that parking along the southern edge, adding four additional sort of landscape islands to sort of break up that long parking field. Excuse me. When we converted this building here, Building G, into a life science building, we had sort of two significant issues. One, Home Depot came to us and expressed some concerns about the commercial nature of the life science building and wanted to make sure that those parking spaces were not removed in support of the commercial building. And then more importantly, we have in this building here, Building F, we have a Roach Brothers, a 33,000 square foot grocer, who has some, had some very specific concerns and has approval rights in their lease over our ability to change the use of that building from a residential building to a commercial building. And they also expressed a concern about the change in parking patterns during the day that could potentially affect their, their grocery use. So they also have asked that we had or not remove those, those parking spaces. I had VHB sort of do a plan that, that laid the 2016 and 2020 plans on top of each other to sort of highlight in red the various things that have changed. And as you can see, those, those spaces in these islands are here. The Home Depot dumpster, which has existed, I think, for the past five or six years, originally in our 2016 plan was going to be sort of relocated and turned, if I can go back. The Home Depot dumpster was going to be relocated here and sort of oriented more to the, to the north. We're not going to do that at this time. We're going to leave that Home Depot dumpster where it is. And then the majority of the changes over here on the west side of the site were made during the Building G permitting process in thinking about pedestrian safety and movement from people parking here in the Home Depot lot and going to the, to the movie theater, pre-pandemic movie theater, and accessing the rest of, of Arsenal Yards. Again, the addition of some crosswalks here to, to improve some pedestrian safety and then a, a small turnaround here in front of the, of the life science building. We, we made this presentation to the planning board last week. And one of the things that we have, we have offered to do, I don't want to create any additional confusion because it, it does seem to get a little confused, is to add a pedestrian path, thinking about the east-west pedestrian connection on the backside of the existing, of this existing parking field to improve pedestrian connection from 100 Forge from this building, keeping people from walking across the Home Depot parking lot and then accessing, accessing a sort of a north-south connection to get you out to Arsenal Street. So that is, and then that's what that pedestrian path would look like. Again, this, this path is, is on our property off of the Home Depot parking lot and within the 200-foot riverfront setback and would require us to go to the conservation commission. Back in April of 2019, when we were in front of the planning board, we're in front of the conservation commission discussing some changes on this path to the river. We did sort of preliminary discuss this pedestrian path. And while we didn't get, achieve final resolution, I think there was some support on the conservation commission for that sort of path to provide east-west connectivity. That is really the, unlike probably most of the people that you see coming in front of you, we are really not looking for zoning relief. We are really looking to, to not remove these 50-plus additional spaces really in support of the building, the life science building, and to certainly satisfy the requirements of one of our existing tenants.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Gideon.
Andrew, did you also want to reference the modified condition H?
I did. I didn't know. So we, we got a planning board report that Gideon had sent me the other day. We are certainly supportive of everything that is a, that is in this, in this report. I would recognize that we, we, the planning board supported us with a four-nothing vote. The final condition is a condition that states 6H. This amendment is not allowed unless an approved east-west pedestrian access path is completed as part of the Arsenal Yards master plan that connects to north-south Ford Road pedestrian walkways from Arsenal Street to the southerly property line on the side at the time of construction. The design of the cross connection shall be approved by the director of DCDP. Certainly, it's problematic for us on many levels, not the least of which is our pursuit of financing for the 100 Forge building, which we are very close to securing, so we can break ground right after the first of the year. I, I can't have a, a condition that sort of says this amendment is not allowed unless, unless an approved east-west pedestrian access path is completed, recognizing that the conservation commission has jurisdiction over that, that area that is just to the south of the Home Depot parking area that we're asking to have, to, to leave in. So I had rewritten the language and I had given it to Gideon. And really what we're sort of saying is that we will obviously pursue and fully support that, that with, that path with the conservation commission. And I rewrote it to really just sort of remove the phrase, "this amendment is not allowed."
Thank you. And then is that, does that conclude the presentation?
That concludes the presentation. I, I think it's, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. But I think, again, I, I guess, David, I'd like to sort of just sort of make the final point that, that what, what we are asking to have added back in is really what remains today.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much. I think we'll have the, just the opportunity now for the board to ask some questions. Michael, would you like to start us off with questions or comments?
Gideon, this is a question for, for staff, I guess, Mike or Gideon. I saw the staff report, there were some concerns that maybe the original plans as submitted weren't clear enough in terms of what was being changed. Has that been addressed at this point?
Yeah, sorry, that, so the staff report was submitted to the planning board and they, planning board required them to update that and we also did. And so they were able to make the updates and these plans are updated plans to better show the alignments and show the previous approved and the proposed, which is sort of going back to the previous. And then there's still some conditions of, like, the primary concern is the trash enclosure area as that, but that's under, so the condition basically is it's under conservation review and control because they had proposed to move that out of the 200-foot riverfront area. So the design of that will have to be finalized through that and that's what we're recommending in approval. And the same with that pedestrian connection, which is actually not on this property. And the area that's adjacent to the one marketplace area. Basically, this has been convoluted because there's a planning board, the zoning board and the conservation commission all have jurisdiction over this one area. But the rest of the, you know, that there was flexibility for the planning board for the other areas. And so this, this approval would provide the flexibility for the conservation commission to make the final decision for that area with, with planning staff, you know, review of it as well.
Okay. I, that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Kelly, do you have some questions or comments?
Thank you. I do have a, a few quick questions. And, and I just wanted to take a, a step back and just make sure that I'm understanding the, the parking, especially in light of how a lot of the regional move is to kind of reduce parking where possible. And I know we exceed at 504 spaces the required 489 spaces. And, and I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to, to having the 50 spaces back. But for the 489 required spaces, which, which buildings do, does that serve for those required spaces?
Those, those 489 spaces are there to serve Home Depot. And so we own and the, the remainder of, so we own the Home Depot building in condominium with Home Depot. So where the movie theater is and where City Works sort of exists, that, that one long building, those 489 spaces are to serve those, those uses. You know, this, this, obviously, this prime, this is primarily Home Depot's parking field. We have, we have created an above-grade garage at Building F, another above-grade garage at, at, over by the hotel. So we are, those sort of, that, that count is, is to support Home Depot.
Okay, thank you. And then for Building G, is there parking anywhere else? Or is the intent that they would access? Because, because I know in the letter of support it mentioned that those 50 additional spaces could serve the life signs tenants and visitors. But is, but is that the intent that they'll use those?
No, the, in, we have 174 below-grade parking spaces that support Building G. When we built Building F, there is, there were two ramps. There is the retail parking ramp, which is here to the north, which takes you up to levels two, three and four. And there is a below-grade ramp right here. You can see these, these two arrows that brings you down to a below-grade parking garage that will, that is intended to solely support the life science tenant. And we're also constructing an additional 54 spaces under Building G and tying those two garages together. The access and the exit for both of those below-grade garages will be right here, Kelly.
But Andrew, I might be incorrect, but the, there is a reciprocal parking agreement between the sites. And so the sur, the surface parking and the handicap parking spaces were intended to provide parking for Building G and for other users, right?
That is correct. That is correct. Again,
That was quite what Kelly was asking.
Okay, because Kelly, we own that, that building in condominium with Home Depot. We do have some reciprocal parking easements. We, we certainly expect, for example, and we had a very detailed and expansive shared parking study. We fully expect that this parking, maybe in this area on nights and weekends, when it's not being used by Home Depot, which is a really a Monday through Friday sort of operation and Saturday mornings, that the movie theater people would be parking in these parking spaces here proximate to the movie theater.
So the entire, the entire parking lot for both the Arsenal Yards, this site and the One Marketplace where Miller's El House was, they all have a reciprocal parking agreement and a plan for, so as each tenant, as each area is occupied, they have to resubmit to the, to the town and we review that with that. And they've done that study as well. So and, and then the other intent is that the area here would also serve for people who are using this public use part of the open space and then going into the Arsenal Yards area?
Correct, correct. The, the one thing that you're not seeing here on this plan, we've created a pedestrian path and a, and a crosswalk at Little Grino, which would take you over to the Charles River. And then, or the, one of the other conditions that we've agreed to do, and again, it's a little hard to see in this plan, is we have put in a publicly accessible 3,500 square foot dog park, which we sort of fully expect to be used by the residents, the apartment residents at Arsenal Yards, but also by anybody in, in Watertown. And that, that's the reason for what, for this parking change here, where we added a, a handicap parking spot and a direct connection over to that proposed dog park.
Thank you. This is really helpful and, and thanks for taking a step back with me just to go over this.
On the project for three years and I feel like you learn something new every day about some of the various components of, of Arsenal Yards and our partnership with Home Depot.
Yes. And then I, I have one other question on the shade trees. So I, I know that the intent and plan is where some of the, some of the current landscaped islands will be removed and the goal is to kind of replace everything with some of these newer landscaped areas. But I just wanted to make sure that we're either, we're not losing any trees. We're either gaining trees or at least replacing it one for one.
Well, we've, we've picked up four opportunities here in these landscaped islands to add some additional green trees and, and the whatnot. We still have these existing landscaped islands here, which I believe we have committed to improving the current landscaping that is in those islands, which is threadbare at best. And then the other thing that we're sort of doing again to, to sort of improve, I think the overall experience is improving the, the landscaping and sort of cleaning this area up and creating more of a linear park on the backside of, of that parking area as sort of a, a buffer to the, to the backside of the project.
And just, I mean, just to speak a little bit more to the master plan, that the curved area over by Building G, which has already been approved as part of the master plan, that's, that's an entirely new landscaped area as well.
This, this area in here.
That area there. So before that would have been just a continuation of those end cap areas and the road used to go all the way through. And that's, that's actually almost built now, I think.
It is. We're, we've, we've received a TCO for this parking garage and, and I'm sorry that Melissa had to, had to leave. I, we will be giving her the grocery store that she's so desirous of in about 90 days. So while it's certainly not going to happen at 202 Arsenal Street, we're very close to opening Roche Brothers. So, so yes, this, this area here, certainly in support of, of all of the things that are happening at, at Building F are, are close to completion.
Thank you. And that's all the questions I have for now.
Thank you, Kelly. Christopher, you have any?
Thank you. Just a quick question. Gideon, I thought I heard you say something, but I didn't fully understand it. Is there an expectation that the dumpster area is going to get redone in some new fashion? Or is there, I guess I'm just not clear. It was going to be redone and now we're undoing the way that it was going to be redone. Is it, is that in front of Conservation Commission? What's happening there?
Yeah. So, so that's a, so condition G speaks to the dumpster area and that it still needs to be redesigned and it speaks to it. It's, it would need to be reconfigured so that the location fencing and gate minimizes the impacts to the riverfront area and provides a north-south pedestrian, the pedestrian access in a safe way and connections to the east-west pedestrian path. So that detail would provide, at a staff level and with the conservation approval, would allow that to get done without it having to go to both boards plus the commission again.
Great. Thank you. That's all I got.
Great. Thanks. Thanks, Christopher. Thanks, everyone. I, I do have a couple of questions. Gideon, thank you for explaining that. So the, the other, then I'm looking at condition H, I guess, which talks about the, the pathway, the walkway east-west, and then talks about a connection along, north-south along Forge Road for pedestrians to Arsenal. So can you, is that part of this, is that part of this? Or is that also going to be something that's worked out?
So that condition is the one that Andrew suggested making a change to. And that came out of the planning board, but it, we only had one day to get the planning board report done. So it may have been over, overly worded and repetitive with the other conditions. And so the reworked language that Andrew just sent to us today, rather than the H that you're looking at there, I, it says, the, this amendment is not allowed unless is struck out. And it says, "Final design and approval of," and, and then the "and approved" is struck out. And it says, "East-west pedestrian access path and is completed is struck out." And then it continues as part of the Arsenal Yard master plan that connects to a north-south Forge Road pedestrian walkway from Arsenal Street to the southerly property line. The design of the cross-site connection must first be approved by the director and receive final approval as necessary by the Conservation Commission. So it creates consistency and identifies the north-south as well as the east-west connector again in a different way.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Thanks very much. So I do have a, a couple of questions then. Could, and I apologize if you've, if you've already identified this. Could you confirm where the, so the market entry, I assume is the hatched area on this plan? Just to the, the right-hand side there?
This right here?
Yes.
This, this actually is the, the, the entrance to the grocery store, David. This is the east elevation. The entrance to the grocery store is, is around the corner and on the north facade of the, of the building. What we have over here is we have several openings in this building. The drive lane, drive ramps down into the below-grade garage, the loading docks for the grocery store coming kind of across the facade and heading to the north. We then have the retail parking ramps up. And then we start with some, a retailer that is on that corner, a restaurant. Turn the corner, we've got the, you know, the leasing office for the apartments up above. And then Gordon's Liquors and then Roche Brothers. And then two more restaurants that wrap around the west facade of that F building.
So as, as we're looking at, and then the, the the irregular shape element that's in white, that's, yes, right there. Could you explain what that is?
That is 100 Forge. That is a 166,000 square foot life science building, which was the original Building G in the master plan special permit approval. It was conceived originally, this was what was going to be the condominium building.
Yes. Okay.
And has been set for life science.
Thanks very much. So, so it's, it's, this is a very helpful plan in my eyes to be able to see the, the landscaping, the new landscaping that's being planned. The one thing I, and Gideon, this may be a question for you or for others. I did notice a, a comment about speed tables. Are, are those in a sense to be determined if they're required? Or are they going to be part of this?
That was a, that was a condition of the original master plan. And they, you know, since then, they've added the pedestrian crossing. And the, and that was also with the original design where it was just going to be a road with no parking. So having parking adjacent to it, it's, it's substantially different. So it's, it's still in there and it's still a condition of the original approval. So I didn't break it out.
Okay, great. And then, you know, as illustrated here, the intent is that for all of these islands, there's going to be some nice, healthy trees that are living there.
The, the existing trees would be assessed and there's a condition that they need to relook at them.
Great. Thank you. I guess they, you know, with, with that in mind, the one area that I'm looking at is if, if we could talk just a little bit to, so I would understand the materiality of where the, where the element, let's say where the, the, the parking that we're talking about, where that terminates on what I guess would be the western side or the right-hand side of the sheet. And then a little farther to that is the crosswalk to the, the landscaped area. What is the, what's the material of the white triangle? Is that, is that flush with the drive pavement? Is it elevated? Is it paved?
That's flawed. That is a flush element and just some, some striping to, to sort of get you to slow down a little bit, sort of neck you down as you're approaching that, that pedestrian crosswalk and coming around. And the other thing you'll see, David, is that we're starting, the grade is starting to, to climb here. And I believe, you know, this, the, the parking lot here is at elevation 25 and I believe, but up here we're at about 31. Reason we have a set of stairs here, again, we go back to the original 2016. Those stairs were back here, kind of putting you, dumping you out right in front of the loading docks. So one of the things we did is we slid that stair further to the north to get those pedestrians closer to the retail environment, which starts on the, on the northeast corner of the building.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. So would there be, is there any detriment to take, taking that painted triangular area and, and making that landscape space? Since the intent is not to have somebody, you know, parked there?
Not, I, the short answer would be not that I can think of. I'd certainly want to talk to our civil engineer and make sure that there, you know, there isn't a reason why we couldn't do that. I, I don't, I don't, I don't see that that would necessarily be a, be an issue.
Yeah, I guess I, I, you know, personally, I think I would encourage that if there's, if there's not an engineering issue, which would be detrimental. It just seems that it's, it's the size, when you think of it, you know, I can even see lightly dashed lines, you know, I guess from what was there. You know, three more people could be parking to the, to the right of that last, last space. It would be, I think, nice to, to manage that with, with landscaping.
That's, that'd be fine.
David, that came up by one board member at the planning board as well. And so there's one sentence in the report that talks about that. But there, they didn't vote on it or put it in as a condition. So it says, "In particular, there was an area to the west near the start of the parking that was shown as striping that should be looked at for a landscape bump out of the curb line."
Yeah. Okay. Thank, thank you for pointing that out, Gideon. So yeah, I, I'm in agreement with that comment. It seems that, you know, that it's, it's quite expansive as painted pavement. And it just seems that somebody could, you know, just decide to park there versus have a striped parking space. So it'd be nice to manage that. And I think would be a, a welcome buffer for the, the walkway path there.
But David, I, I assume you're, I assume you're talking about the area that would be just to the east of the crosswalk. So kind of maybe creating, this is a landscaped island and leaving, leaving this area to the, to the west alone.
You know, unless there's a benefit, I'm talking about, I think, the whole triangular form and making basically the, the crosswalk have to go, in a sense, less far across drive, drive pavement. But unless there's an engineering reason that, that would be detrimental, it just seems that it makes sense to manage the landscape in, in an outline that's illustrated. So I don't have any other comments. Gideon and Mike and Josh, I'd be interested to hear if there are other aspects of the other conditions that were mentioned that, that you would want to raise.
No comments.
Okay, great. Thank you. So then I, I think we can ask to see if there are any questions or comments from the audience. But Gideon, you'll have to help me along on that.
Oh yeah, no problem. There's one, there's one attendee left and she's just raised her hand. I'm going to ask her to unmute.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. This is Libby Shaw, member of Trees for Watertown. Andrew Kapalati, thanks very much for this presentation. I'm particularly interested in the opportunity presented with those four new islands. It, they're represented as having fairly large shade trees on them. It would be lovely to see that those, that, that, the shade trees of that size can actually do really well there. In order for that to happen, considerable planning has to happen underground. For a big tree, a certain minimum required soil volume is necessary for it to do well. And oftentimes in a situation like this, there'll be a large area of, of, of healthy soil and surrounding that underneath the pavement will be structural soil so that the tree is able to really stretch out its roots. That makes it much hardier in stiff winds as well as giving the, the tree a chance to, to have a long, healthy lifetime. We're particularly, we're particularly excited to see developers building into their plans, opportunities for trees to have really long lifetimes so that they can truly benefit everyone who's using this space, not just the cars parked to the right and left that will be shaded, but, but all the other benefits that trees bring. So I was wondering, has there been, has thought gone into these particular islands yet to think about what can be done to ensure that trees planted there can, can have long lives? 50 years, whatever, something like that, which is possible if a tree gets to be that big?
Yes. So Libby, actually after your question last Wednesday at the planning board, I, I did have a discussion with Steve Woods from IBI Landscaping. Steve's been on the project. I'm sure you're familiar with him.
Yes, I am.
And so Steve, I gave Steve sort of the marching orders to consider, you know, what we needed to do to these islands. Remember, these are approximately 18 feet deep by about 14 feet wide. You know, if a parking, these parking spaces are nine by 18. So these, these islands are fairly substantial when it comes to, if you think about the, the tree pit discussion, I think that we had on 202 Arsenal Street, you know, about
You know, about being able to extend on a six by 14 tree pit, to extend that soil to 10 by 14. So I think we have the opportunity to get, uh, you know, uh, the appro- appropriate amount of structural soil. Uh, that will allow those trees to flourish.
That sounds great. Also, that would be outside of the, uh, of the actual island. That sounds great. And then, um, it sounds as though you're introducing more green space over to the east side of this parking lot. Um, sort of, uh, on the, uh, sorry, let's make sure I have my directions right. I think it's the east side. Yeah. Um, there's kind of a entrance, or is that the west? Sorry, no, west side, west side. Sorry, I'm directionally challenged. It's the west side.
Over, over here.
So where the, where the road curves down at, at the, uh, yeah, down there.
So this, that's right. This, this, this island here and I believe, uh, the majority of this island here are all new. Uh, there's a new retaining wall that you can see, this is sort of a, uh, this dark line is the retaining wall. That's separating the, uh, lower parking, uh, from this sort of upper parking area. So yes, uh, that area is getting all, all new landscaping.
I, I do want to note that that part has already been approved and built.
Okay. So my, my comment obviously is just, is just that everything should be done to make sure plantings can do really well. I'm cop, I'm talking from the point of view, I mean, I'm sure everyone's been. Very aware that, uh, parking lots are great places to, to kill plantings. Because they're, they're very unfriendly unless you really do make an effort to make sure they've got adequate, uh, soil volume and, uh, around them. Just to, it, it, not only to provide volume for root systems, but to give them a little bit of a buffer from all that radiating, um, pavement around them. So that's just my, that's my, my interest in those areas.
Great. Thank, thank you very much, Libby.
Thank you.
Um, and Gideon, is there anybody else?
Um, let me just check my email again.
Oh yeah, thank you.
There, there's, there's no emails. And, uh, there's no question and answer and there's no one in the audience.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. And then, um, for any of the board members, any other follow-up questions or comments? Okay, great. I guess we'll just, um, go into the closed portion of the meeting. Um, and then, you know, Gideon, Michael and Josh, just please help me along here. Um, looking at the, at the conditions. Some of them seem standard and then some of these others, as, as you described, Gideon, they're going to be pending, uh, I guess the conservation commission input.
Yeah, the, these conditions are designed as an addendum to the previous approval. With the understanding that conservation needs to approve the areas that were already approved under the conservation approval.
Okay, great. And then just for, for other, um, board members, are there any, um. Any of the comments and or questions which you had, um, uh, in your, uh, opinions to do that? Do those add any further conditions to the application?
None for me.
No, none for me either.
None for me. Okay, great. I think, I think I would just add the, um, the condition about the landscaping of that painted wedge of pavement. Um, uh, should there be no, uh, let's say, engineering, uh, or other detrimental aspect to adding that as landscaping? But I think that would be an improvement to the, uh, to the plan.
Agreed.
Um, but I don't, I don't have any, um, other comments and if, um, the board's ready, if someone would like to make a motion.
As your chair, I move that the board approve the amendments to this, the requested amendments to the special permit with all of the conditions we've just discussed.
Thank you. So there's been a motion made to approve the amendments to the previous decision. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, I'll do a roll call then. Um, I can, number Donato?
Aye.
Number he?
Aye.
And number Brianlin?
Aye.
And for myself also an aye. So. You're approved and thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much, everybody. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Thank you.
Happy holidays.
And then, uh, I think we're all set, right?
Yeah, you need a motion to.
Yeah, not, but no, no other issues to discuss. Okay. So if there's a motion to conclude the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. And then, uh, for roll call then, um, uh, number Brianlin?
Aye.
Member Donato?
Aye.
Number he? Aye.
And for myself, aye. So I think that's it. So happy holidays, everyone. Thank you very much. Yeah.
Happy holidays.
See you next year.
Yeah, thank you to Michael and to Josh and to Gideon. Uh, thank you very much for all the work.
Thank you all.
And David, David and Kelly, thank you very much for speaking up for the trees.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Happy holidays. Thank you.